Okay, welcome to the November 5th meeting of the Rybrook zoning board of appeals. As you can see, we have the full complement of the board this evening. If you're going to be, well, we have with us Village Council Bob Zitt, Village Building Inspector Steve Fuse, Board of Trustees Liaison David Heiser. We have two items on the agenda this evening. If you are going to be making a presentation, please come to the podium, state your name, whether you're representing someone as an agent, the nature of the variance. We should be able to move through these applications rather rapidly. We don't seem to have a massive number of people in the audience wanting to say yea or nay. So let's begin with the first application and then we'll open the public hearing for that. The application is ZBA-24-015, Christopher Ware, Anita Ware, Three Terrace Court, constructed second-story addition, three dormers, and interior alterations. First, can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So open, some will.
Public hearing is open, please.
Hopefully I can hook this onto the screens and you can see what I see. Okay. My name is Evan Sikovsky. I'm the architect for the project at Three Terrace Court. So we're here today because we are asking for a variance to exceed maximum allowable gross floor area on an addition project for this home. There's also a renovation project, but we're here for the addition. What we're asking for is to go over that allowable amount by 281 square feet. And so basically what you have on the screen right now is the proposed site plan. And you can see on this is the outline of the existing house, which is, whoops. Sorry, bear with me, is right, is here. And so the addition, which is this shaded area over here, is entirely within the footprint of the existing home. So we're not adding, we're not going out or adding any coverage or anything like that. Just take you here so you can see what that looks like as well. So basically, this house, we feel there is a hardship for this house and a reason why we would like to exceed the maximum allowable floor area. The house is an existing slab on grade home. There's no basement, there's not even a crawl space. So all functions of this home must be above grade, short of tearing it down and starting from scratch. The homeowner is looking to add home office space, home gym space, a proper laundry room. We feel that all of these, and I can show you how that lays out on the plan here. That's the second floor plan, and also a larger closet for their master bedroom. You know, we feel that all of these are reasonable sizes for these spaces in a home. Outside of the walk-in closet, the other three functions are often functions that people might put in a basement. Most of the homes in Rybrook have basements and the zoning code, as long as that basement is below grade, doesn't count it towards gross floor area. So again, our hardship is that we don't have the opportunity to put any functions in a basement. So in order to make this home functional for this family, we really have no choice but to add on to the home and add what counts as gross floor area. So that's why we're here tonight and we're hoping that you'll approve what we think is a modest request.
Have you looked at the other homes on terrace in terms of comparability?
You know, I didn't, and I guess I should have. There are a few homes on that block that have clearly been renovated and added to. I don't know the square footages or if any of them needed variances, but they look like they've been at a minimum maxed out, just from the look of them.
It's, that section on terrace is very, when I went through it, it's very compact. It's an R10, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the houses are really relatively close together compared to other sections. So my first concern was, when this addition comes in, how does it impact the neighbor to the side of the extension?
Sure.
What screening or whatever will be provided or available?
Well, in terms of screening, I don't know, that hasn't been discussed yet. I mean, there's actually, so the neighbor to the right, and the homeowner is here tonight, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but the home that's to the right is a corner lot and that home is actually way out, like it's diagonal facing that intersection. And I am sorry, I don't have an image of that.
Are there windows on that side that will be facing?
From the existing home or the new?
On the proposed, you know, on your addition, are there going to be windows in that second story?
There are windows in the gym, yes. So that's this side of the house right here, there's two windows. The view from there, like I said, though, would be looking at the angled corner of that neighboring home. I do think there's a fair amount of space there because of the way that home is situated on its lot. You know, I'll also note that we're within our setback allowance on this one. It's not as over, we're close to the lot line or anything like that.
Okay, okay. Anyone have any questions regarding this application? In terms of the, can you give us a front view of the proposed?
Sure.
Okay, that's a portico?
Yeah. Yes.
And, you know, you want to bring that up, Joe?
Well, simply that we have, generally, we don't want you to be able to expand the house to meet the portico. So you would have to, in the future.
Okay.
So you would want a stipulation that there be no expansion forward to the, beyond where it is other than the portico itself.
Are you talking about going over the portico?
We're bringing any part of the house off.
Any part of the house, bring it forward.
Yeah, I mean, I, we, I don't see.
You already have, you're already pushing.
The portico is right up against the minimum setback anyway. So if you were to expand into that space, you wouldn't even be able to have a, I mean, I guess you could have it from the side or something, but it's, yeah, we don't have any objection to that.
Because you, you know, you have, you will have the GFA limit anyway because you're pushing it now.
And for what it's worth, that entry space, let me bring up the plan again, is, sorry. Right, that's, there's an existing portico there that we're replacing. So it's basically, it's a very slightly different footprint, but it's basically replaced in place. The other thing I wanted to point out in the foyer, that's a double-height space currently. There's nothing above the, like, this is open through to the second floor here. So if, you know, there wouldn't even really be an advantage to pulling that out because you're just adding to your entry foyer space, really, there's nothing else you'd be able to put there.
Okay, is there any feeling on whether you want to go ahead with a condition on?
I think I'd want the condition, just as a safeguard.
And again, we don't object to that. I was just pointing out, I don't even think it's anything to worry about, but.
The problem, as you know, there are future residents.
And when someone says 10 years from now.
Sure.
It's not, that's what they say now, so.
Yeah.
Bob, can you craft that condition as we continue? Okay, thank you. Any other questions of the architect?
No.
Okay. Now, you alluded to the fact there's somebody else here. Do you want to speak to the application at all? Okay, okay, all right.
Come on.
There being no one wanting to speak, Steve, was there any late correspondence regarding for or against the application?
No, we haven't received anything from any interested party.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience who want to speak for the application? Anyone against the application? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Public hearing is closed. Okay, as I run through the five factors, it is self-created. The variance coming in at percentage-wise, it is significant. Okay, from a quantitative point of view. Now, I had asked Steve whether or not there are any water issues with respect to the property. And you had indicated that there were none aware of in that particular area.
Correct, there's no water issues as I'm aware of.
Okay, can I just ask you, even though I closed it?
Yeah.
How are you capturing the water coming off that addition? Have you thought about where it's going?
Also, it's the same coverage again. So we're just building up over existing roof that currently exists where there's existing gutter systems. So it's not like we're adding roof area, it's the same roof area.
So you just move the gutters up, is that?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. So there doesn't appear to be any physical or environmental conditions, comfortable with that? And what about the character of the neighborhood? As was indicated by the architect, and I went through it, there are some houses that obviously were built up and it's very typical of Rybrook in a sense of transitioning. A lot of the homes are blowing up the doors and expanding. So it is part of the tradition of expansion. The question is, is, as we do the balancing, is the benefit to the applicant exceeding any of the negatives associated with the application? And I came down on the side of no.
I think so.
No on that one, comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay, will not affect the character of the neighborhood. And I guess there is no other way that the applicant's needs can be met with respect to this. And I thought about, is this the smallest possible variance? But then I kind of answered it because you're going right above.
You're not changing the footprint.
And you're not changing the footprint, okay. Okay. So let me go ahead and read resolution. Whereas the application has been made to the zoning board by Christopher Ware and Anita Ware collectively for a gross floor area variance in connection with the proposed second-story addition, three dormers, and interior alterations on property located at Three Terrace Court in an R10 zoning district on the west side of Terrace Court, approximately 90 feet from the intersection of Jennifer Lane and Terrance Court, Terrace Court, sorry. Said premises being known and designated on the tax map of the village of Rybrook is parcel ID 135.66-1-22. Whereas the applicant seeks relief from the requirements of the zoning, Rybrook zoning code, Section 250-22, Section E, the maximum allowable gross floor area is 2648 square feet. The applicant's proposed second-story addition will result in a gross floor area of 2,929 square feet, thereby requiring a variance of 281 square feet. Whereas a duly-advertised public hearing was held on November 5th, 2024, closed on November 5th, 2024, at which time all those wishing to be heard were given such opportunity. Whereas the proposed action is a type-two action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act and accordingly, no further environmental review is required. Whereas the board from the application after viewing the premises and neighborhood concern and upon considering each of the factors set forth, at Section 250-13, Section G, Part II, Items 2A through E of the Rybrook Code finds: One, the requested variance will not create any adverse impact to the character of the neighborhood. Two, the benefits the applicant seeks cannot be achieved through another method feasible for the applicant to pursue that does not require the variance. The requested variance is substantial. The requested variance will not create any adverse impacts to the fiscal or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. And five, the need for the variance is self-created. Okay, now therefore be it resolved that said application is hereby provisionally granted on the following condition. What about the paying in full? That's not on here. Should that be on here?
It usually is.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, so I'll basically say the applicant has to pay all the fees to the village in the appropriate and timely manner. Okay? And, okay, the second condition, okay, you want to read that, please?
Sure, the applicant shall not expand the house to meet the portico without first obtaining necessary approvals from the village of Rybrook.
Okay, comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, now let's vote on it. Steve?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Don? Yes, application approved, five yeses, zero nos. Okay, congratulations. So I put dot-dot-dot, Bob, so that you can put the appropriate thing in. Okay, that's all right, as long as we catch. Okay, there we go. Okay, the next application is ZBA 24-016. Robert Gordon Brown and Jennifer Parker, 33 Woodland Drive, new raised patio terrace with retaining walls, outdoor kitchen, and pergola.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is David Vresby. I'm a landscape architect, resident of Third in Connecticut, New York. My office is at 15 Rock Spring Road in Trumbull, Connecticut. Tonight, we are here on behalf of Robert Gordon Brown and Jennifer Parker to request a variance to Section 25-37.B of the Village of Rybrook Code. Code states that a deck cannot exceed 4% of the total lot area. Our proposed deck has a coverage of 4.75%. We are requesting a variance of 0.75%. This subject parcel is located at 33 Woodland Ave., and it straddles, what?
Woodland Drive.
Woodland Drive, sorry. And it straddles the municipal border with the town of Portchester. As a result, any area of the parcel located in Portchester cannot be used in the area calculations for the lot. This reduces the effective areas when making calculations and puts the properties, property owners at a disadvantage with the neighboring parcels. The subject parcel is 29,913 square feet, 8,437 square feet, or 28.2% of the parcel is in Portchester, and 21,476 square feet, or 73%, is located in Rybrook. The area of our raised patio is 1,019 square feet. All of the work is being completed within the area of the property in the village of Rybrook. And it's in a scale that is in keeping with the expectation and other work in the neighborhood. If this patio was calculated on a lot that is not disadvantaged by straddling the two parcels, we would have a coverage of 3.4% as opposed to 4.75%. So it's within what would be expected on this parcel of this size. So we are requesting the variance of 0.75% to sort of level the playing field so, because the lot is disadvantaged by straddling the two parcels. We request the variance be granted for that section. The hardship is not self-imposed. We can't control where the village of Rybrook and Portchester line is.
But you can't control the size of the deck.
But we can control the size of the deck.
Right.
Yes.
So it is.
Somewhat self-imposed.
Technically self-imposed.
Yes. There are no adverse impacts to the neighbors. There are no adverse impacts to the overall neighborhood at large. There are no life, safety, or health impacts to the village of Rybrook or Portchester or the neighborhood. And we respectfully ask the variance to be granted.
Now, one of the questions we have, we recognize the existence of the hardship.
Yes.
But when one buys a property and they're told that they're going to be paying taxes to two municipalities, that usually creates a certain amount of interest. And so one of the extensions of that would be, how does that impact the quality of my life? I guess for some, the positive is that you can send your children to the Blind Brook schools or the Portchester schools. I happen to know the property very well since I walk in front of it every day. So I'm very familiar with that. But my question has to do with the size of the deck. As the architect, why does the deck have to be that size and not smaller? To reduce the overall impact of the variance.
We've kept the overall patio in the size that it is based on furniture layouts. So when you look at designing outdoor spaces for living or you're looking at designing a house or any outdoor spaces, you start with spatial relationships. So, okay, if I'm creating a sitting area outside, a typical outdoor chair for sitting would be, say, 30 inches square. And a couch would be, say, 30 inches by 72 inches or 60 inches. And when you start doing furniture layouts, whether you're in, creating a house in an interior space or an exterior space, you need a certain area of space to accommodate these things. And then you start thinking about circulation ways and interior hallways roughly, maybe 36 inches. So when you start thinking about outside and you're moving between spaces and you're creating areas in front of the house, we want to create those same sort of relationships for circulation, so moving around and through the spaces. And if you're creating a dining table area for a certain number of people, it wants to have a certain area for that to occur so that you can pull the chairs out and move around and, you know, you want to create a space that's comfortable and not like, like you're crammed in there. You know, and then steps down, and then we have an outdoor kitchen space with a little herb garden next to it. We've tried to include green space on the raised terrace elevation so that it would reduce that, the effect of, the overall effect of the area. I am not a fan of bringing green space up to the building. So I prefer to bring, you know, paving up to the building just so we can do flashing and, you know, protects the structure. And it's facing north, so we tend to pull things out a little bit when you're facing north just so that you're not in the shade.
Because the way I sort of think about the process is, if you started with the premise that we're going to build a deck that meets the bulk standards, and then you design it with that condition, that you start with a square footage, the impression I'm having is that you're starting with what we would like to have and how we would like to lay it out, and let's get a deck the size that would accommodate that. Is that a fair assessment? Because that's what it sounded like when you were describing it. You know, the couch goes here, the deck goes here, and then we need enough space to walk around. Rather than if we met the deck standard and then we put the appropriate furniture in place, we would not need a variance, so.
We were looking at the coverage as the overall plot, not as being restricted to just the area in Rybrook.
Yeah, I understand that.
That was, that's sort of it.
You're not the only one in Rybrook, though, that has the co-terminate situation. So.
Right.
You know, what we have to do as a board is look at each application individually.
Yes.
And if we say to your applicant that it's okay, we'll ignore the restriction that the Portchester component puts on it, I would not want that to let anyone else think that that gives them that same argument. So I'm looking at it from the point of view of, we have five factors by which to judge and we weigh the applicant's need against those five factors. The fact that it happens to be in Portchester. Is an additional, you know, restriction that this application has that maybe others do not have. So that was why I was just trying to get an understanding of, you know, the need to have a variance that was 0.75, which is significant statistically. And I'd like to be able to balance that against what the applicant needs versus the granting of the variance based on the five factors. So that's basically the logic of my question. But I do have one, as a neighbor.
Yes.
A culvert was put in front of that house along the Portchester section. It is the only one on Woodland Drive that has that cement culvert in front of the house. So every day when I walked by, I asked myself, who put that there? Was it the applicant? Was it Portchester?
The town of Portchester.
They did?
Yeah.
And, okay.
That was one of the questions the owner said for me, was like, there's this trench out in front of the property that is a mess, how can we get this cleaned up? And then he called me up and said, it's taken care of, we don't have to worry about it.
Yeah, I don't know if it's free to speak, but I just called the village manager of Portchester.
That was very nice of them.
I thought so, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it was, just so you know, you know that beautiful 100-year-old chestnut tree that you.
Yes.
I had the folks at Parked Tree come by and the problem is all the runoff from the street was causing stress on the tree.
Oh, okay.
And so I went, and, look, I mean, it took a year and a half of politely asking Portchester to do it and one day they came along and said they'd found the budget and I said, thank you.
Congratulations.
Just for the record, that was Robert Gordon Brown, homeowner, 33 Woodland Drive.
That's good.
We like the record to be complete.
So one question is, the impervious restriction is largely related to water and, you know, where it's going to go. So with, where, what's the current drainage situation and how is this going to affect drainage?
We have prepared a drainage plan, done by David Gesell, who's a civil engineer. He prepared a drainage plan that will pick up any additional impervious coverage on the property. And it goes as a coltech.
Okay, coltechs and?
Yes. And it complies with the regulations, I think, and the building inspector has reviewed that.
Well, that'll be reviewed by Michael Nowack when we get to that point.
I have a question for the village attorney related to this. If the purpose of the restriction is water and it's in relation to the size of the property, et cetera, et cetera, why wouldn't the Portchester aspect of the property be counted when it's still one single residence? I understand, yes, it's a different village, but it's, but in terms of the purpose of the restriction, why would that matter? Why, why, why don't we count it?
I don't mind, I don't mind. I don't mind considering it. In other words, the fact that you have this hardship from Portchester.
A rule's a rule, but.
It's not entering into my decision, though.
But if, what yours point is, if the lot were entirely in Rybrook, you wouldn't be here.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Right. And because more than, you know, more than 25%, it's 28% of the lot, that reduces our coverage numbers by 28%.
Right.
If this was a 50-50 lot, I don't know how you'd build a house, you'd build anything on this lot without a variance because it would reduce all of the numbers. And to us, this is, you know, 28% of the lot is, as you say, statistically significant and it creates a statistically significant reduction in the calculations for the slot. And this is the only, you know, we could conceivably reduce the area of our deck. We've already done that to bring it back, you know, in line and closer to the house and stuff, once. We could do that again, but it would, you know, we would be taking things out of our program.
See, on one hand, can this deck be reduced? Personally, I think it probably could be.
I think so.
But the other side of it, which honestly is weighing heavily, more heavily on me, is the fact that the deck size is appropriate for the, for the complete structure. Putting aside, part is in Portchester, part is in Rybrook, in relation to the structure itself, it is, it is an appropriate percentage.
And for the lot size, if this was entirely in Rybrook, we would only be at 3.4% and not maxing out our, not maxing out our allowable square footage.
You're almost 5,000 square feet above the bulk standard for the R25 zone.
In terms of?
Square footage of the lot, total lot. Your lot is 29,000 square feet total. And you're in an R25 zone, so you're already 5,000 square feet above the minimum for that particular area of Rybrook, so.
It's an oversized lot.
It's an oversized lot, relatively oversized.
It's an interesting lot also, which has been difficult to work on because there's no rear yard, there's no rear property line. So there's no rear yard setback, which is interesting. So there's only three, there's the front arc and then there's the two side property lines. It's a pie-shaped lot, so there's no rear lot line.
So that's sort of like. So that's sort of like a mathematical puzzle. In other words, there is a space there, it's called the dot, where they two come together, but technically that's not enough to be called a rear yard. I mean, you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
It's just, it's not the only, I have a.
Would you ever choose a teacher?
I have a pie-shaped lot right across the street from me, which caused the exact same problems when that house was trying to be built, because it had to come forward toward the street because of the impact on the flood zone. So they had to come forward. It does create its unique situation.
Yes.
Just as the previous application with no basement cause some concern. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak for the application? Anyone want to speak against the application? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing? Public hearing is closed, okay. The only two is substantial quantitatively, 0.75, okay, and it's self-created, other than the fact there's no environmental conditions impacted, it's not going to affect the character of the neighborhood. And we already discussed, is this the smallest variance that will meet the applicant's needs? And you seem to come down on that, all right? Okay, let me read the, let me read the resolution. Whereas application has been made to the zoning board by Robert Gordon Brown and Jennifer Parker, collectively the applicant for a deck coverage variance in connection with the proposed raised patio terrace with retaining walls, outdoor kitchen, and pergola, on property located at 33 Woodland Drive in an R-25 zoning district on the north side of Woodland Drive, approximately 150 feet from the intersection of Beechwood Boulevard and Woodland Drive. Said premises being known and designated on the tax map of the Village of Ry Brook as parcel ID 136.29-1-4. Whereas the applicant seeks relief from the following requirements of the Ry Brook zoning code. Section 250-37, Section B, the maximum allowable deck coverage is 4%. The applicant's proposed raised masonry deck patio will result in a deck coverage of 4.75, thereby requiring a deck coverage variance of 0.75%. Whereas a duly advertised public hearing was held on November 5, 2024, and closed on November 5, 2024, at which time all those wishing to be heard were given such opportunity. Whereas the proposed action is a Type II action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, and accordingly, no further environmental review is required. Whereas the board from the application, after viewing the premises and neighborhood concern, and upon considering each of the factors set forth at Section 250-13, Section G, Part B, Items 2A through E of the Ry Brook Code, finds the requested variance will not create an adverse impact to the character of the neighborhood. The benefits the applicant seeks cannot be achieved through another method feasible for the applicant to pursue that does not require the variance. Three, the variance is self, is substantial, sorry. Four, the variance, requested variance will not create any adverse impact to the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. And five, the need for the variance is self-created. Now therefore be it resolved that the said application is hereby granted to the following conditions. Again, pay all the fees before, at the appropriate time, for the application to be officially approved. No other conditions, okay? Are we ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay, Steve?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Don, yes, application approved, five yeses, zero noes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Enjoy the ride back to Trumbull.
Thank you, listening to all the stuff on the TV.
Not while you're in the car.
Okay, there you go, Bob. Okay, the last item on the agenda is the approval of the October zoning summary. Any problems with that? No problems? Can I have a vote on it? All approved?
So moved.
Approved, okay. Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay, public hearing is officially closed, congratulations.